Okay. Okay. Good morning, everyone. It's 10:32 and I'd like to call the May 12th, 2022 meeting of the Lackawanna County Regional Planning Commission to order. And now we'll do a roll call. Cindy Campbell?
Present.
Jerry Carey? Absent. John Potchus?
Present.
Chip Merly?
Ah, he's here.
Okay.
No, he's here.
He's on the call. He's here, yeah.
His mic is muted.
Oh, okay. Harry Lindsey?
Present.
Rosemary Broderick?
Present.
And Tony Grisanti?
I'm here.
Oh, hi, Tony.
Hi, I don't, I told Mary Liz yesterday, I'm not so sure how long I'll be here, maybe for a half hour or so. Cause I'm at, I'm in another meeting actually in New York, so.
Thank you.
But I wanted to join. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, and did we hear from Tom Owens Jr.?
No.
No.
We have not.
All right. And now we move to public comment. Was there any public comment, Mary Liz?
I have not received any requests from anybody, so no.
Okay. Alrighty, and now for the minutes. Um, we have distributed the um, April 14th Board Meeting minutes via the email to the board. And I'd like to know if there are any corrections, additions, deletions to the documents. None? Okay, then I ask for a motion uh, to approve the minutes.
I'll move.
Okay, John, thank you. Uh, any second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries. All right, and now we go to the bills.
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. And now correspondence.
Okay, we only have five uh, letters going out this month. Two were to Valerie from our office for CDBG projects for the environmental uh, impact statements. We just had to sign off on them that there wasn't any in environmental impact to the projects. Uh, three support letters. One was to the Heritage Valley for an economic impact assessment of the trail system. Uh, one to actually Blakely Borough, that was their engineer or somebody doing work for them, for a DCED flood mitigation grant. And to the DCNR grant to Taylor Borough for improvements to Doranic Park.
Okay. Then we move to the old business.
Okay, under transportation planning, uh, the first item is we, the, the first quarter invoice is ready to go. We're waiting uh, for the Penn Dot contract, or I'm sorry, the Colts contract. Um, Colts has signed off on that. Um, we do need a motion to approve it, so Brenda and myself can sign it. We need to get that to Penn Dot. Um, they have not had a contract with us for the pass-through money from the Federal Transit Authority for uh, several years. They're finally getting back to um, requesting the, the reimbursement from us. So it's pass-through money that we get, so it just comes from Federal Transit to us and then to Colts for their, for their work on the UPWP.
Okay, so um, I'd like to make a motion that we um, accept that.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. Uh, the second?
Second.
Okay, any, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Oh, thank you, sorry about that. Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on, um, myself, Brenda, Bob, Jessica, we all participated in the April 20th MPO quarterly meeting. Uh, it was a hybrid meeting, so that was the first time we were back in the Penn Dot building and actually the first time since they've remodeled it that we were in the Penn Dot building. Um, the agenda items included some tip amendments, free projects. Um, one of them was in Luzerne County, the other ones were uh, ground-mounted billineators for the interstates and high-friction surface ramps for I-81. Uh, we discussed um, the spring project commencement which Bob actually put together, so um, uh, Jay Sheckman, of course, was doing that, um, where he passed away, so Bob is uh, assuming that responsibility. Um, we received a request from the City of Carbondale for funding for two bridge repairs. Unfortunately, the IIJA money is not to add projects, but to kind of uh, expediate what's already on the tip. Um, we gave them some information on the multimodal program and um, some information on some new grant programs that are coming through the IIJA. Uh, the TASS Awards, I, I think we, we've seen that maybe in the newspaper. We did get three. Um, that's the transportation set aside Monday, uh, money. Uh, Archibald Borough for Columbus Drive for sidewalks and curves near the uh, Valley View High School and Intermediate School. Uh, Dixon City Borough for improvements to Main Street, multimodal improvements, and the Heritage Valley Authority for a mile gap in Dixon City as well. And then also the uh, multi-modal transportation fund, one one award in Lackawanna County to Olive Borough for improvements to Mid Valley Drive, sidewalks, curbs, actually bus shelters as well. Um, we went over some progress reports. We talked a little bit about the downtown bike study, uh, Penn Dot connects and um, looking at revising the bylaws and then again the Eastern Freight Study. So two days later, we went back to Penn Dot for the Penn Dot connects meeting, and that's the municipal outreach meeting. There was about thirty people in attendance and there was about ten or so um, online, so again, it was a hybrid. People from uh, Olive District Four, there were some Wayne County representatives, Pike County, Luzerne, Lackawanna. I thought it was well attended. Um, they basically went over, you know, Penn Dot's goals and all their information that's available to the public and the local municipalities. Bob is, is working on our updating our functional class. Uh, Chris Chapman from Luzerne County actually popped over to our office after the Penn Dot connects meeting to uh, help Bob or explain what he needed to do. So if, Bob, you just want to give like a real brief overview on what this entails?
Uh, yeah, so uh, basically, uh, Penn Dot on their OneMap uh, system has traffic data for pretty much every road in the county. Uh, so what I've been doing is going through comparing uh, the, the numbers for each road to what it's currently classified in the system, you know, minor arterial versus local road versus, you know, major collector, uh, and seeing what needs to change.
Thank you. Um, the Eastern PA Freight Alliance, again, that's a group of the five MPOs in the eastern part of the state, um, doing the freight study. We interviewed the two consultants that finished in the top two positions. Um, right now, we had to complete a tally and get back to Lehigh Valley, and right now, it's, it's still like within a tenth of a point between these two consultants. So we're meeting again soon. I don't know exactly the date yet to discuss this and determine which consultant we're going to go with. Um, myself, Bob and Jessica participated in the HOP meeting that's held quarterly with Penn Dot staff to review the projects that, that have been applied for highway occupancy permits. Um, this is the first time I've been on this, this meeting since before the virus hit. Um, it was quite, um, how do I say, eye-opening to see that, that the projects that Penn Dot highlighted, um, from Hazelton to Carbondale. Except for one, every project was big box warehouses. We're talking the Hazelton exit, the Dorance exit. I think Da- up Davis Street, we have one, uh, Mayfield and the Meredith Street exit. The only project that wasn't a warehouse was at Aldi's in a Wawa, proposed for across from the Dunkin' Donuts on Music Street in Scranton.
Wow.
Um, working still with Chris on the tip. That's to be ready to go shortly. We had to do an environmental justice analysis, which Central Office graciously did for us, so we don't have to worry about that. Um, that will be advertised in the newspaper. It will be available here, we at, uh, a few of the libraries in the county as well, and that should be going out later this month or early June, hope to be adopted at the July 6th MPO meeting. Bob and Jessica actually did a webinar on May 2nd on the, uh, it's part of the IIJA. It's called Safe Streets for All Program. Uh, it was a national presentation, so it was very general. Um, Jess, I think you said the best thing you got out of that was the, the link for the website for the program?
Yeah. Yeah. And to sign up for um, their newsletter, so they're just sending me other emails for webinars, so hopefully one is going to be um, more beneficial for, for us directly.
Right, and this is, like I said, a new program through the IIJA. Um, moving on, SABBA, we had, we still haven't heard anything yet. I know Scranton's going back and revising some sections of the ordinance, but I haven't heard anything. Again, Dummore is still waiting for them. Um, Scranton, New York Passenger Rail, no activity last month. Hazard mitigation, um, we got a request from Pima to uh, address some comments that FEMA had on our original application. Um, again, with the, the COVID money that we're getting, we're able to request a little bit more than normal, also with no local match. Again, we're doing it a little bit early, again, be, to get this money. Um, they had some questions on the high-hazard dam analysis and the, this is something that we need to do that we haven't done before. Um, they had suggested in an email that they sent out to everybody that we budget at least twenty thousand for this project, so that is the amount I put in the budget. They came back and told us that we have thirty-three high-hazard dams and we needed to budget about a hundred and ten thousand for that.
Oh.
Yeah, so I misunderstood when they said at least. I thought that was what everybody was supposed to be requesting. So anyhow, we had to revise uh, budget amount to, to include the hu- hundred and ten for the high-hazard dams and then in re, um, because of that, we had to eliminate two other additional programs that we had hoped to study. Um, we had to eliminate the equity planning and the, the COVID studies. And we're hoping with the new Department of Health that the county's creating that they will, you know, be dealing with COVID. Um, so we eliminated that. So we are going to do the technological man-made hazards study and the cultural and historic resources study.
Do you know, Mary Liz, do you know, do you know the ownership on those uh, dams?
I do, I have a list.
Who owns most of them, majority?
It's a mix. It's a mix of public and private. I know the county owns, the county owns a few. I think the water companies uh, proof, like I said, a, a couple um, recreational groups, a couple of private owners.
Wow, okay, thanks.
Uh, nothing on the Chesapeake Bay Water Shit Plan, and our new regional planning group came up with their own acronym now. We're calling it NORLAC for Northern Lackawanna Planning Association. Uh, we had a meeting up in Carbondale. It was representatives there except for Fell Township. They couldn't make the meeting, but Michelle Banner from the city has been in contact with them. Um, it was a positive meeting. Everybody was um, interested in it. What we decided was to go out to the local uh, councils and supervisors to kind of sell the pitch to everybody. Um, as of now, um, Ted and I were in Carbondale Township. They're on board. Last night Ted and I were at Mayfield and they're on board. Uh, we actually are going to Vandling next week, and then we still have to set up meeting with German Greenfield and Bell, but so far it, it's, the reaction is positive from everybody.
Do you have funding lined up?
No, what we're going to do is we're going to get, uh, what we're asking the municipalities right now is to express their interest, and then we're going to put an RFP out for a, a cost estimate, and then we're going to apply for the grants at that point. And that is it for old business.
Okay, and we move to new business.
Okay, so development reviews, we've got, we had quite a few that had um, some interesting comments, so we'll start with the first one is Cloverleaf. And Jess is going to talk about that one. That's an Archibald, and that is page uh, eleven.
Right, just like Mary Liz said, this is on page eleven of your packet. It's Cloverleaf Development and Archibald. Um, I did, when I received this plan, I reached out to the municipality itself and had some questions. Um, I'm sure they're really busy. I just haven't heard back, so a lot of my comments may have been addressed in maybe a master plan that exists somewhere. Um, I'm not sure. It wasn't referenced on the plan. Um, anyway, this is on Beverly Road and Pierce Street in Archibald. This is the proposed construction of two, two-family dwellings and a multifamily dwelling, so we have two duplexes and a triplex. Um, the community already has many um, townhouses and multifamily dwellings. Um, there's also some single-family dwellings along, I believe is Catherine Drive. And so my comments, I wrote them without knowing if the streets were owned by the um, homeowners association, if there is a homeowners association, um, if they're owned by the municipality. Now, as of this morning, I know that they're owned by the municipality, so a lot of these things may not be applicable, but um, on page twelve, uh, my first comment refers back to that master plan or phase plan, if one does exist. Um, I assume that they've already gone through some processes because it's a fairly developed community already. Um, item number two is reflective of townhouses not being a permitted use in the R2 district. There are a lot of townhomes already in existence on the property, so I'm sure there are variances that have been approved, and I just, nothing was indicated on the plan, so I'm not sure. Um, that's, that's really the premise of all of my comments. There were just a lot of information missing off the plan, so um, does anyone have any questions, comments, or concerns about this specific plan? I know there's
This, this project has been ongoing for several years, and I know Steve has done reviews in the past, uh, same thing requesting the information on whether they got zoning approvals or um, if there is a master plan, and we have not, Archibald just does not want to answer or doesn't, we just can't, we don't hear anything back from them. So I know, you know, the majority of the project is there and they're just adding a few more buildings, but again, you know, keeping it consistent with the reviews we've done in the past, they're just keeping us in the dark as to what's actually going on there.
You know, the sad thing with this whole thing right here is Jessica, this is a marvelous review. All your reviews that I've looked at here in this month's package are like above and beyond. I mean, it's like you're the QAQC officer for the engineering firms. It's like
It's really nice.
Good job.
Good job.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, but the, the sad part is Archibald could ignore all these and just approve the plans in any shape or form because this is just obligatory to get a review, you know, like, am I right, Mary Liz?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Well, I hope that they don't do that because I would really like to see this community have some open space and maybe some sidewalks, but, but that's besides the point. Um,
Well, they are, they are updating their comprehensive plan, and I'm assuming there's zoning, but I don't know that it's done, so maybe, you know, they're waiting to see the final of that before they make comments. I, I, I don't know. Or this would be entailed to that, so, you know.
Yeah.
But again, great job, Jessica. That is fantastic.
Thank you. Um, then if you don't mind, I'd like to move on to the next one, and this is on page fifteen. And this is in Music. It's for a proposed um, Mavis Discount Tires, and it's going in the Bernie Plaza Development. Um, the actual address is three, three, five, six Bernie Avenue. So this property, I believe it's vacant now. Maybe historically, I think it used to be a restaurant. I'm really not sure. Um, but it's the building opposite of where Long John Silver's is. So when you come into Bernie uh, Plaza, it's on the right. They're proposing to demolish the existing building and then construct a new building for this Mavis Tire um, operation. And
Is it more towards the front of the road?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a, when you come down Bernie Avenue, there's a very steep retaining wall, and you look down on this property. Um, and it's kind of right in the nook there. Um, and that's actually, brings me into on page sixteen. My comment number four is about buffering and screening requirements. They do have really good buffering and um, screening requirements in their ordinance, but because of the condition of the site, I truly don't know if it's feasible. Um, there's a very small strip of land in what would be the rear of the building, but I'm not sure that it can sustain any kind of trees or anything to buffer the residential properties. Um, also, the residential properties are built up probably about twenty or thirty feet. Um, so I'm not quite sure that buffering or screening in compliance with the ordinance is going to be something that's feasible, so I hope the governing body takes that into consideration. Um, there was a little bit of an issue with an ADA parking space. I'm very passionate about ADA compliance, um, and they had proposed to leave the parking lot as is. Um, if that were the case, the first ADA parking space, the most accessible route would put them at a set of stairs. So I just proposed that they move it over, um, to allow more space and accessibility. Um, additionally, item number one, um, they may have some issues with putting this use one hundred feet um, away from the R District. Right now, it's proposed to be thirty-eight point eight-one feet away from the R District, so they may need to go get some approvals for that as well. Anyone have any questions on this review?
Yeah, Jessica, this is John. Uh, do they, is this going to be a ground lease or what? I mean, they really should delineate, you know, uh, we had a similar situation in Scranton a few years ago when Popeyes went into the South Side Shopping Center. That was a ground lease that was defined by a, a meets and bounds inside the overall property. Uh, I don't think they can just move into that area without some definition of what they're actually going to be responsible for. I, I, that's not
They showed that. Did they show that, Jess? I don't think so.
They didn't show any of that, no.
I just think they need one. I mean, that's up for the borough to decide, but I just believe that it should be some kind of ground lease to show whatever uh, they're doing. Cause you had comments on the parking spaces and for the overall shopping center, and there's been a drastic change down there. Uh, what's the name of the big supermarket? Billy Brice? Yeah, ShopWise in there and uh, they're remodeling for other things down there, so the whole shopping center is getting a rebirth. Uh, and I think you, you got a right comment. They should look at the overall shopping center to see if there's enough square footage for the uses in there, you know, I mean, enough parking. But this is another good review and uh, I just, you know, think there has to be some kind of ground lease or at least some kind of definition of what this Mavis is actually gonna uh, entail. That's my comment.
Right. I fully agree, yes. Okay, if there's nothing else on that one, I'm going to move along to
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you there. Bob's got one in the middle here. Uh, page twenty-two, Lands of Siemens in Bed Township.
So uh, Lands of Siemens, it's a lot consolidation uh, on the banks of Lake Sheridan on State Route one oh seven. Um, so the biggest issue we had uh, was that they don't indicate what the uh, proposed use for the uh, lot is. Uh, it's pretty small. Um, uh, with the buffer from the lake, I think it's fifty feet um, setback, uh, about half of the lot is undevelopable. Uh, and then when you add in other setbacks, which they don't show on the plan, they list the two uh, two-acre lot setbacks rather than the less than uh, half an acre lot, so I'm not sure what their plan is as far as, are they planning to consolidate further with an adjacent lot that's owned by the same people or just develop it as is?
And there's also an issue with the HLP there. If you're familiar with that area, it's of one oh seven, and it's quite a steep drop down to the lake property, so there may be a, a need for an easement through other properties. I think there already is one on the adjacent lot coming like an easement that comes across the, the lots instead of directly from one oh seven.
Right, there's a, an existing gravel drive that runs up to what will be the new lot.
We surmise that it's probably going to be consolidated with the adjacent property, but they didn't, they didn't tell us, so we have to assume that it's going to be a developable lot until they tell us otherwise. Okay, I guess Jess, you're back up again.
All right. Um, then I'm going to go to page twenty-six. This is a property in Jefferson Township, uh, Lands of Homer L. Butler. This is on Golf Course Road, and it is um, in a little nook between I-84 and the former golf course. Um, it's a little triangular property there. So he's con- proposing to construct a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot steel pole building to be used as a minor automotive repair shop. Um, I think that it's worth noting that the entire site can be seen from I-84. It kind of looks straight down, and that brings me into my first comment on page twenty-seven. I'm so sorry, that's my second comment, number two. Um, outdoor storage of vehicles. So when I looked at the site, um, there's a lot of kind of construction equipment. Um, there's porter potties, there's an old bus, other kind of equipment um, that is stored on the upland portion of the lot that's almost level with I-84. Um, so when you're, I was doing Google Street View, but when you're Google Street viewing down and you're driving down the road, you can see everything there on the right. Um, I'm not sure if that's part of this use or not, and that kind of led me to use my comment number one and define the use, um, and then express that there are some more extensive regulations if that use extends into something above and beyond this minor repair shop use. Um, there's also a secondary access point to that upland area. Um, so I'm, I'm really not sure if the plan is to service those vehicles, if maybe they're gone, I'm not sure. Um, but I did have some concerns about that. Um, additionally, um, on the next page, page twenty-eight, uh, he didn't have any ADA parking, so I'd like to see him add ADA parking. Um, there was no landscaping plan or outdoor lighting plan, um, and they do need both of those as well. Um, does anyone have any questions about this particular review?
Yeah, just did a, did they provide a ba- a boundary survey in their submission? Does it meet some bounds and a surveyor's seal on this plan?
They did.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay, good. That was my comment. Yeah, thank you.
Welcome. And he did pay, um, the top, the review fee is left blank, but he did pay, and I will add that when we get off the call. Um, then we'll move along, I guess, to the next one. This is page thirty-one, and I promise I'm almost done.
This is good.
Lands, and I'm, I'm so sorry, if someone knows the correct pronunciation, I might do a terrible job. Lands of Corigliano, I believe, Inc. in Scott Township. Um, so this is the proposed subdivision of a thirty-seven-point-five-six acre parcel into five separate lots. Um, it includes a street extension of Cherry Street terminating in a cul-de-sac that will serve four of those lots, and then one lot will retain the road frontage on Justice Boulevard. Um, there was no scale on the plan, so I tried to measure it out. I think that it is one inch equals a hundred feet, but there were a few parts on the plan that I just couldn't get to match up, so maybe my scale is wrong, maybe those lines were wrong, I'm not sure. Um, I think it's worth noting that Scott has already approved the plan. I got a call from, um, the property owner or developer. Um, but I told him, I'll send him a copy of these comments when we're done, if, if you all approve them. Um, so my first comment that I'd like to address on page thirty-two is item number two. Um, the plan indicated that it was a minor subdivision, but since they're creating the street and this cul-de-sac, it is a major subdivision. Um, and I think maybe that's why a lot of these items were missed. Maybe they looked at it as though it was a minor when it's really a major.
Um, And they've already approved it.
Yeah.
As is, so.
Yeah. And the things that I'm particularly concerned with, especially since it's already been approved, um, was number three, uh, three A, to be exact. Um, since there was no scale and they didn't indicate the road frontage for a lot of these new lots, um, I went off the curb data that was available. The curb data said that the road frontage would be sixty-point-one-seven feet when the ordinance requires any new lot be seventy-five feet. So they may need to seek some approvals for that. Um, or it is possible, maybe that's something with the scale. I'm, I'm not sure. We don't know. Um, additionally, item number four is all relative to the new construction of Cherry Street. Um, additionally, item number four is all relative to the new construction of Cherry Street and that cul-de-sac. There was no information on that. Um, and then I think one of the, the most pressing concerns that I have is item number five. There is a small part of the cul-de-sac that looks like it could be encroaching on wetlands. Um, again, with the way the plan um, is presented, maybe it's not, maybe it's just appears that way, but I, I think that's worth some heavy consideration.
Yeah, and actually the Cherry Street portion that's offsite, but is still owned by the, the same person. Um, that, that part of the road is not improved as well. So when you look at that, plus the cul-de-sac extension, they may be disturbing more than an acre of land, which would require an MPDES permit, but they, again, submitted it as a minor with no rope, no information on road details or anything. And apparently the township has approved it as is.
Especially if there's an impact to wetlands, that might pull you into an MPDES permit, definitely. No. Maybe even more, maybe even a one oh five, who knows? But that's still, regardless of what the township said, those, those, those outside agency approvals are still required for construction.
Right.
I, I don't understand how you could do a subdivision without the mentions on the plan. Ah. I mean, the, the, the lots weren't dimensioned?
There, there's no scale.
Oh.
I mentioned to measure that. There's no scale and some of the dimensions, um, I was messing around with my scale. Some of the dimensions added up to one inch equals a hundred. Um, some of them didn't match up at all. So, so I'm not sure. Um, there were some dimensions, but particularly the one lot that I'm concerned with, it just didn't have any dimensions written down, except the curve data.
Well, how could you do a subdivision as a surveyor without the dimensions? Doesn't make any sense. I see Harry rolling his eyes.
John, sometimes you have impatient property owners that just submit plans that aren't completed.
But as the professional, you have to tell them this is.
But it might be a sketch plan. You know. A sketch plan, all of a sudden like, oh, give me that. I'll take care of that.
Oh, a sketch plan, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, there's nothing you can do, but.
I know, right.
It's a shame.
It is, it is.
If it's a sketch plan, they wouldn't need our stamp. They're calling for the stamp, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, ESC knows what to do.
Yeah.
You know, they, they've been in this.
I mean, if they start construction, the Conservation District could be called out there and just, you know, say, where's your plant? Stop, 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 you know?
Yeah, yeah, you're right, yeah. Um, they haven't brought it back in for signature by the county to get recorded yet either, so.
Not yet.
Cause it needs approval. Well, not approval, even though it's withheld, you've done a review. It doesn't have to be.
That's correct.
We gotta sign it anyhow if they come in. If the township signs it, we have to sign it.
I, I forget, Mary. It was on your stamp. Is there a, is there the same stamp or it just says you reviewed it? It just says reviewed by?
It says we, we were afforded the opportunity to review the plan.
I got you. And that's all the MPO, MPC.
That's all they require.
Okay, very good.
Does anyone else have anything on that plan?
I know Chet's trying to talk, but we can't hear you, Chet.
Tommy's gotta get out of the basement.
Okay, I'm gonna go on to um, Chat. I'm so sorry if you were trying to speak, we couldn't hear you. Please feel free to interrupt me if you have anything. Um, I'm gonna go on to my last review. Um, page thirty four, Master Millwright's Industrial LLC on Lonesome Road in Old Forge. So currently there is a um, I believe it's a machine shop, yeah, machine shop operation there in an eighteen hundred square foot building. And they're proposing to construct a new twelve thousand square foot building to expand that use. Um, the next page contains my comments. Um, I would really like to see them show me parking calculations for both items. Um, both the existing use and the proposed building because they're both going to continue in operation. So I think that we need to make sure they have adequate parking. They did reference a code section, but the code section was for parking calculations was in reference to open space. So I provided them in um, one B, the um, code sections for both commercial buildings and industrial. Um, the governing body should make a determination which one of those were best. Um, I will say when I did the parking calculations based off of both of those uses, the calculations were coming up with something like forty plus parking spaces. And logically, I, I don't know that this operation requires that many. So I, I would like to see the governing body decide how many parking spaces and which calculation to use. Um, and then the only other comment that I really had, they do have um, some screening requirements, but there is a large amount of forested area behind the lot, so I assume that will remain. I'd just like to see a comment listed on the plan that those are to remain, so they're not taken down. They're supposed to um, bring the, the lot into compliance. Um, so does anyone have any questions on that one?
Yeah, I see you comment on uh, uh, you're right, your, your comment five uh, reflects the, 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 the flood zoning down there. And this area floods constantly, Harry. I mean, you know that and everybody else. This road is, has been out of that service a few times in the last couple of years, so I, I assume then they're bound by the, cause it's new construction, they're bound by the flood plain, raising up the site and get it above flood elevation.
Yeah.
Along some roads and SR, so they're bound by the HLP calculations and drainage and all that. So it's a tough site to expand on.
Yeah.
I can only imagine what the insurance would be on that.
Oh my god.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna get another great review. It's just, well, oh well.
Well, thank you. Well, those are all of my reviews that I have to discuss.
And we have just one more. Bob, real quick, on Jefferson Township with the, their amendment to their zoning ordinance, creating a new lakeside district. Pretty much around Music Lake and a few other of the lakes up there that have uh, the smaller lots with the uh, mix of summer and, and uh, full-time uh, houses.
All right, so uh, like Mary Liz said, uh, the majority of the amendments were uh, regarding the uh, the new lakeside district. Um, it's primarily gonna be residential, uh, single-family, uh, tiny houses, manufactured houses. Uh, some recreational facilities uh, are permitted. Um, and non-impact or no-impact home-based businesses. Um, other than that, it's pretty much just the stuff that's allowed everywhere, forestry, that kind of thing. Um, there were a few other uh, issues they were changing, things they were tweaking. Uh, it increases the minimum size for off-street parking uh, from nine feet by eight, or nine feet by eighteen feet to ten by twenty. Uh, it increases the maximum floor area for residential accessory structures from one thousand feet to fifteen hundred feet. And it adds a section dealing with recreational vehicle parking. And that's about it.
So that is it for development reviews.
Okay. Okay, I ask for a motion to recommend approval of the reviews for May. In a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Another question, Carol. Uh, I have a direct conflict with item number two, North Abington Township, Lands of Sun Aqua Farms. So just make the record note that I, I, I'll vote for the other approvals, but I'll abst- I'll abstain from uh, the Lands of Sun Aqua Farms. I'm actually the surveyor that submitted the plan on that, so, in our company.
So moved. Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Hi, hi, with the exception, okay.
Okay, thank you. And any opposed? No? Okay, the motion carries.
Okay, next on new business is a vote by the board to remove Tom Owen Jr. for non-feasance. He has not um, attended a meeting since he was appointed last May. Uh, we did send him a registered letter. It was signed for. Uh, the letter stated he needed to contact us by April twenty ninth if he chose to appeal this or um, you know, wish to stay on. We have not heard from him. I believe the commissioners are aware of this. Um, Brenda's shaking or, or nodding yes. They're aware of it, so they're not uh, objectionable to this, but according to the bylaws, the board has to formally remove him and then we notify the commissioners of a vacancy.
Mary, let's have a question. Um, since our board doesn't appoint members to the commission that, that is done by the county commissioners, um, this is confusing to me.
Yeah, the, but we, we are allowed as the commission to re- you know, suggest or remove a person, even though they are um, appointed by the commissioners. It's just the way the bylaws are set up. So they will, we just notify them and they will have the authority to approve who they put on.
So was this considered a vote to recommend removing?
Well, the way the bylaws are written, it says to remove.
Okay.
So however you want to handle it, we, you know, we, then we will notify the commissioners there's a vacancy.
Mary Liz.
Yeah, go on, go on.
Mary Liz, wasn't Tom on once before?
He was. He was on several years ago and then we had that controversial energy plant in Jessup. Remember, we had the meeting up at the nine one one center because we had.
I'll never forget it.
Uh, I believe after the vote was taken on that, he, he handed in his resignation.
So there's been no communication with him since then?
Not, nothing.
No, and, and the commissioners, as Mary Liz stated, um, they, they are aware and Mary Liz and I shared um, the letter that went to him um, with them prior to sending to him. And um, you know, I, I think that we really want people that are involved on the board, so um, you know, he has not shown um, at a meeting. So at this point, the commissioners can then appoint someone else.
And can we look forward to recommendation? For who we think might be an appropriate person to serve on the commission in his place?
Yeah, absolutely. Just send it to me.
Uh, I, I know they try to get a, a pretty dumber, like spread the demographics out to all the county to get representation. What was Tom representing? This is a specific area, Mary Liz?
Well, not really, because we have, he's from Archibald and I know we have Cindy and Chet and To- Tony who's standing off in that area. We do not have a representative right now from North Pocono.
Yeah, like and Harry and I are Down Valley, Scranton and Music area down there.
You know, Jerry and Rose are from the Abingtons.
Yeah, so I mean, okay.
But we don't have, Bruce Zero was our North Pocono rep who, he was replaced. So we do not have a North Pocono person on the board.
Uh, yeah, would they consider appointing Bruce, having him return to the commission board? I mean, he was, he was a good commission member.
So the motion would be to, to remove? I mean, that's the way the bylaws read or our, or, or laws?
Yes.
Okay, then I look for a motion to remove Tom Owens Jr. from the board.
Well, I'll make that motion. I'll make the motion to remove Tom Owens as a member of Lacklawn County Planning Commission.
And I'll second that.
Okay, any questions? On the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
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 Any, any uh, objections? Seeing none? The motion carries.
And, and other business real quick? Want to meet in person or do you want to continue virtually for next month?
Right, so we're, we're meeting in July and August this year?
Probably not, but you'll vote next month.
Wait, June, next month is June, alright.
Next month is June, July and August, you'll, you'll vote next month to whether to suspend those two, two meetings.
Okay.
I think this is working out. We're getting a, a super majority, so you know, it's parking being the biggest issue downtown. I mean, it is, there's just no really place to park. You can go down in the mall and get a ticket and run back down there and or try to park at a, you know, one of kiosks on the street, but uh, you know, I, I think participation is good. Uh, we're having a super majority every meeting, so I, I'd say let's stay virtual. Maybe pick a meeting uh, maybe reorganization, maybe pick one where we should get together. Or something is really pressing, Mary Liz, maybe, you know, a little more important, you know.
Well, maybe, maybe since, since we're not meeting in July and August, May, September might be a longer meeting. Maybe that would be a good time to meet in person, you know?
Okay, I don't mind coming in once in a while, but this, this is working. This is really working very well.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, yeah.
What, uh, what's the current situation within county government in terms of this uptick in COVID? Uh, Brenda, do you have any idea?
I mean, as of now, we're having uh, commissioner meetings in person. Um, so we, we haven't put any restrictions on in-person meetings.
Yeah, the building is pretty much open normally, like, you know, to the public as it was prior to the virus.
Yes.
But you now have an issue with county employees coming down with COVID?
Uh, no, there, there's protocols that are put in place and we're following CDC guidance and such. Um, but you know, as for individual activities and meetings and, and going with normal business, um, there, there's no restrictions. Clearly, if someone has um, COVID, even, you know, if they're asymptomatic, there's a procedure for them as well.
I agree with John. I think the attendance has improved since we've moved to Zoom meetings and I think they work. I'm okay with that.
Be nice to get back together, maybe like Cindy said, maybe for September, you know, or something like that. We could all get back together or uh, in person. And uh, you know, if there was.
John's pushing for that dinner meeting, isn't he?
No, no, not a dinner meeting, no.
Maybe September, maybe December for a holiday meeting.
We'll have a Christmas meeting.
Yeah, like it may be a Christmas luncheon meeting, like.
There you go.
Yeah, Mary Liz.
Yeah, that'll work.
You know, if there was a convenience spot off-site where everybody could meet a little more accessible, a county facility somewhere, that might not be a bad idea too. So give you some time to think about it. Cause like, you know, PennDOT would move the uh, the MPO meetings around, you know, we weren't going down to Nipa once in a while. We were going up to uh, we were down Hazelton once. I mean, it might be easier for everyone if there was an off, an off-premise building that had space, you know, for, for a meeting room that might be easier, you know?
Yeah, well, the nine one one center is kind of the, the convenient.
Yeah, that is.
Essentially located, uh, I, I believe they're open again to the public. We could inquire if we wanted to move a meeting up there.
That might not be a bad idea. Take a ride up there in September or, you know, October, whenever you want to have one together, you know?
Yeah. Okay.
Cause we've had other meetings up there, you know? The twelve-year plan gets presented up there usually, right, Mary Liz and stuff like that. So I mean, it's, it's a good building. It's got plenty of space accessible to the public and there's parking for everyone, for us.
We don't need a motion for that, do we, Mary Liz?
No, we could discuss it next month and then we'll decide, because we will have to put a, an ad in the paper because we're changing the meeting location if we do.
That's not a big deal. You got enough budget to do that?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay.
All the years I've been on, Mary Liz, I, besides the, what was her name? Used to come down from the Abingtons all the time to see how we were making out with the Sapaque.
Oh, Denise.
Denise, she was the only one who ever came, you know?
I know.
I think Joe O'Brien showed up once for a project. I, I don't remember, like, it's, we don't get anybody. Harry, back in your day, do you remember? I don't remember a lot of.
Once in a while.
A few, once in a while.
Only if there's something controversial.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. Okay, and then there was no public comment, Mary Liz?
No.
Okay. Uh, then we move on to adjournment and uh, look for a motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Hi. opposed? Motion carries. And again, good to see everyone. Thank you all.